I'd like to welcome you to December 9th special City of Kingston Planning Board Meeting pertaining to the Kingstonian. I'd like to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the fact that the United States is a republic and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce the board members and the staff that's present. Matt Gillis, Kevin Roach.
Jamie Mills.
Huh?
Jamie Mills.
Well, no, I know Jamie Mills. She was winking at me. And Mary Jo. The, okay, we're, the staff, we have Sue Cahill, the Planning Director, Kyla Dida, Assistant Planner, Alderman Scott Childs, the Common Counsel Laison, and Daniel Gardenstein, the Assistant Corporation Counsel. Okay, I'd like to den, restrooms are on this side of the room. You have an exit there, an exit over here. In case of a fire, do not use the elevators. Thank you. Please silence your cell phones and conversations should be taken out of the room, out to the hallways. Okay? And please respect all speakers. Okay, I'd like to open the public speaking. Fifteen minutes are allotted, all limited to two minutes. The open public speaking is for any planning-related topic. Please note, the Kingstonian is not listed as a public hearing at tonight's meeting. And be advised, anything that's put out will not become part of the record in the open hearing. Thank you. Do we have, anyone want to speak? No one wants, anybody want to speak? Okay, we'll close the open public speaking. We'll move right into whole business. Okay? Can we read both of these at the same?
What?
They are the same.
Yep, they're both.
Yep. Okay, this is for 9-17 and 21 North Front Street and 51 Schwenck Drive and a portion of Fair Street Extension. Lot line deletion of lands of Herzog Supply Company and the City of Kingston. SBL 48.80-1-2526 and 24.120. Seeker determination, Zone C2, mixed-use overlay district. Kingstonian Development LLC applicant, Herzog Supply Company and City of Kingston owner. Okay, and item number three, which is the same, 9-17 and 21 North Front Street, 51 Schwenck Drive and a portion of Fair Street Extension. Site plan, special permit to construct a mixed-used building with a 420-car garage, 143 apartments, 32 hotel rooms and 8,000 square feet of retail space. SBL 48.80-1-25 and 26 and 24.120. Seeker determination, Zone C2, mixed-use overlay district, Kingston Development LLC applicant, Herzog Supply Company and City of Kingston owner. Okay, there we go. You guys want to introduce yourselves?
Sure. I'm Brad Jordan with the development team.
Dennis Larios, Site Engineer.
Mike Moriello, Attorney.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll take it from here.
Yeah, Sue Cahill will pick it up now.
Okay, we're just gonna wait one minute for Rob.
Wait one second for Rob.
Mr. Chairman and Sue, do you want Dennis to go through those?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was going to ask. How do you want to, do you want us to bring those up or?
Dan, you can stand there and we'll keep. Huh? Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. I do have hard copies, which...
This was the original before and after that was submitted for the project before the addition of the additional 14 units. And that's a view shed looking up Wall Street towards North Front Street.
Dennis, what I'm gonna suggest is that we just kind of switch around to allow for the audience to be able to see what you're presenting.
really is not visible from uptown perspective view shed. That's because the height of the building proposed where the old garage was, where the old Montgomery Wards was, would block any higher building that's back at the Schwenck This is a closer rendering with and without the eighth floor. And as you can see from this perspective, which is at the intersection of the pedestrian plaza at North Front Street, there's no visibility of the eighth floor. Like to pass it around the table? and the pedestrian bridge. And this illustrates the project additional story here. It offsets from Schwenck but it's, you know, down, you know, well off of North Front Street and it is visible from this perspective. And that's another view of it from leaving Kingston Plaza towards the intersection of Schwenck Drive and Fair Street Extension. But this illustrates the addition of those units up at this level. So that's a change with the addition of the 14 units from the uptown perspective and from the Schwenck Drive Kingston Plaza view shed.
Okay, so the issue for this evening is to review Part III of the Seeker environmental form based on the decisions that the board made at our last meeting under Part II. And you should have all received them via email. Have you had the opportunity to review them? And I don't know if you have any questions, but we'd like to go through that in detail. Okay?
I let the record show that Robert Jacobson showed up after the initial roll call.
This guy's a good guy.
Actually, I have a few places, so we've got to go through them once a while.
Page 33, there's just a mistake in the reference. 33, just, there's a reference to R6 zoning, which is not the case. It's C2. Halfway down the page.
Okay, so the comment is?
Just, it says, "Project is in harmony with the R6 zoning district." It's not the R6 zoning district.
Should be C2.
33 in the middle, page 33 in...
It's the one I issued today.
This one, right?
Yeah. The one you just, I gave you.
About three quarters.
Maybe this is where it looks different.
So do we have that? Page 10, did you get the date?
I think it was till the end of the month. It was, the public hearing was left open, I think, until August 31st.
Those we will be trying to confirm.
Which version is the latest and greatest of this one?
The one that I passed around tonight and the one that was emailed out late this afternoon is the most current version.
Sue, on page 21 with the traffic study, you have energy squared added to that? Okay. Page 21. So, energy squared is, was added to the traffic input PACS study? But that's a bit of a distance away from it, so how would that traffic impact? Do you felt that, did you feel that traffic would impact?
It was considered only because of the Broadway traffic and the uptown traffic working together, so we did ask for it to be...
I believe on the name of the action, action on the first page, I believe it says 142 apartments. Could be 143, I believe.
Name of action, you said?
142 should read 143.
It is site, it will be a site plan and a site, and a special permit, yes. I'm sorry?
I have the final form, but...
Okay.
Site plan, it's not, not finalized yet. What page, Rob?
I have a page 15. It's referring that we...
Yeah.
First, the first paragraph.
Visuals, but we haven't actually seen a site plan.
Well, there was illustrative site plans provided, but not the final site plan review that will be subject to further action by the board. More detail, obviously, will be provided.
I can reword that paragraph. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Ask other people to use their microphone on this here?
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, I saw this, definitely.
Yeah.
I saw other people outside the, getting up.
Absolutely.
I love that. Training. Green, move a little volume on it.
Crack, 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 crash. Did talk about that. Scratch. That's correct. Talk about that. Just. This year.
Rip it off my pen. See, rip it off my pen.
Sue. Page thirty-two. Third paragraph. Number three. Word pounded. Does it make?
The one that starts with respect to?
No, the sentence, the lead agency basis is finding.
Provided within the detail.
Provided?
Okay.
Sue. Page thirty-six. Second paragraph down. It references seven units of affordable. Shouldn't that be fourteen?
Okay.
Think that's at the top story, though. The other seven units are mixed in the building.
With the existing.
There's only seven on the top floor. The rest of the affordable units are mixed into the building.
All the units are mixed in.
Yeah. Yeah, it's only, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Right. But the seven, there's only seven units added to the top.
The other reconfigure within the existing buildings to add seven more. Inertial first, affordable for inertial first throughout.
Yep.
I wish I did. Did everyone have a, have a chance to go over this? Does the applicants want to, want to speak at this time?
I have just a couple of things for the board, too. On page eleven, Sue, where it says little K, the zoning petition date was June fourth, two thousand nineteen. So we can add that. And then there's a question in here. It says, "The next paragraph, all of the foregoing areas of concern were thereafter studied by the applicant's consultant, with the attendant reports and written narratives following." That follows the whole list of all the reports that were submitted. I mean, my suggestion is that you just cite the website, the website, citation to the website, rather than annex all those reports to this document, because I think you're gonna, you'll have a huge document that you're circulating. There were a couple of other places where, for some reason, Sue's red lines didn't come out. They're at pages twelve and thirteen. In one instance, there's a portion of a paragraph which I think Sue has to add back in. And in the other instances, it was just that red lines didn't show up for some reason. This, as the board knows, this document tracks the, the part two of the EAF that was filled out by the board on November sixth. It also considers all the criteria in six seventeen point seven, which is the underlying basis for determination of significance. That's where all the headings come from. As the board's gone through in the past, all those headings are included in six seventeen point seven. I do think that, in addition to any questions that the board may have or any kind of additional information, we should probably discuss the board's reaction to the visuals that Dennis showed tonight. You know, we presented them, but, and you can see that there's the, no significant visual effect, in my opinion, but I'm, I'm not the board. But I think we should probably discuss that, and Dennis can answer any questions that the board may have, too. That narrative also Sue has in here at, would have been where Rob pointed out before, at page thirty-six is where it says narrative to be determined, so.
Rob, anything you want to bring up, bring forward, Matt?
I didn't hear what you asked.
I asked, does there's anything you want to bring up, questions?
I don't really have any questions. But the visuals, you know, from wall and north front, you really do not notice the additions to the building. From the Schwenk side, which is not, you know, from, from hit uptown Kingston, it's different, you know, the view from the plaza is different than the view from the storefronts and whatnot on our front and wall. So I think that it's good that you, you really can't see the difference from those. That's where the visual is most important to me, in my opinion. So.
Anybody else have anything? I'd like to make a motion to table this until the December sixteen planning board meeting. Do I have a second? I don't have a second. Second by Mary Jo. All in favor? Opposed? Carry it.
Thank you.
For a motion. Yes.
Right.
Yeah, by law, you gotta wait a week.